Good evening and welcome to the Seal Beach Planning Commission Meeting of June 1st, 2015. The meeting will now come to order. Commissioner Cummings, would you like to lead us in my inflection tonight?
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the equality for which it stands. My elevation, my power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call please?
Chair Slone.
Here.
Vice Chair Cummings.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Machin.
Here.
And Commissioner Pratt is absent this evening.
If there's no objections, we're formally, uh, we're formally dismissed, Mr. President. Commissioner Pratt tonight. By motion of the Planning Commission, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commission or staff to request an item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Is there any changes to the agenda tonight, or proposed changes?
No changes, Miss Chairman.
Uh, the calendar stands as presented then.
Well, um, actually, I stand corrected. There is a change to the agenda item. Um, agenda item two. I believe it's minor use permit fifteen dash three. Is that myself?
Yep.
There's a correction in the address. And as a result of that, we would need to re-adaptize this item for noticing purposes. The, um, property owner has been advised of this and we will have this item presented to Planning Commission next month. And the proper address is supposed to be what's that?
C-22 Pacific Avenue.
Pacific.
Oh.
Okay.
So apparently there's been a, um, a change of addresses that have occurred in Surfside Colony.
Okay, do we have a motion to remove this item from the, uh, calendar?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Please vote. There we go. Oh. The vote is four in favor, none opposed, no extensions. Uh, the motion carries and we will, uh...
Do we have to excuse Commissioner Pratt?
That was already done, so.
Hmm?
That was already done.
Okay.
So we'll delete, um, item two, the minor use permit request fifteen dash three, and defer that till a later date. Okay, oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the Planning Commission regarding any items within the subject matter's jurisdiction of the commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the commission cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes each. Is there anybody in the audience tonight that would like to speak to a matter not on tonight's agenda? I don't see none. We will close the oral communications. And move on to the consent calendar. There is only one item on the consent calendar tonight, and that is approval of a Planning Commission meeting minutes of April 20th, 2015. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote. The vote is four in favor, none opposed, no extensions. Uh, the motion is, is carried and the consent calendar is approved. New business. Minor use permit number fifteen dash four. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes, good evening. Applicant James Tigman submitted an application for minor use permit fifteen four to allow a covered front and rear porch on the primary residence of a residential property that is non-conforming due to density and located in the residential high-density zoning area with no habitable space added to the existing residences on the property. The subject site is located on the west side of Sixth Street, north of Central Avenue. The parcel is developed with a one-story residence at the front and a three-unit residence attached to a three-car garage at the rear. The subject site is surrounded by residential uses on all sides. The subject property is non-conforming due to density, parking, and setbacks. The applicant is proposing to extend the front covered porch and construct a new porch at the rear. The Seal Beach Municipal Code allows for minor improvements for unenclosed porches to non-conforming residential structures with approval of a minor use permit. The proposed structure lies within the parameters set by the Seal Beach Municipal Code and complies with development standards for the residential high-density twenty zoning area. The additional, um, actually, no additional habitable space will be created. After conducting the public hearing, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the attached resolution as conditioned. Staff along with the applicant are available for any questions.
Any questions? Of staff? Would the applicant, is the applicant here tonight? Would you like to make a comment? Please come to the podium.
Okay, yes. Jim Tigman, my wife Sherry is with us tonight, she is with us as a contractor. Um, we're just wanting to add on a front porch and a rear patio deck with cover.
Extend that front patio out a little bit so you have room to get around the chairs?
That's right.
And walk by the dang hill?
Little porch swing.
Very nice.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions? Would anybody else like to comment on this tonight? And we'll close public testimony on this item and, uh... Any, can, any discussion? What is, what's the commission's, uh...
I would like to move. Move to approve and adopt resolution number fifteen dash ten, approving the minor use permit fifteen dash four with conditions.
I'll second that.
Please vote. The vote is four in favor, no extensions, and no, uh, no, no's. Uh, the motion carries and the permit is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Tigman. Good luck with your project. The second item on tonight's agenda is a public hearing item, Zone Text Amendment fifteen dash two. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. The reason why this item is before you this evening is because every once in a while, staff will notice a trend that occurs in the community. And when that does happen, depending on the severity and the type of trend that's coming into the community, we'll present the issue as a discussion item to City Council. So, the item that was discussed with City Council was on May 11th of this year, at which time staff presented, um, an issue that's occurring with the probability and prospect of three-story, single-family new construction coming into Old Town area. And that is primarily affecting at this time RHD-20 density units. And so that's primarily all of Old Town area for which could be affected. And so, um, staff presented this item to City Council and City's council instructed staff to move forward, create a Zone Text Amendment and do the zoning ordinance that would insert the proper wording to ensure that in the Old Town area, RHD-20 zoned classification properties that the maximum height, as still is in place, twenty-five feet for single-family homes, but also insert the text wording not to exceed two stories. So what you have before you this evening is a Zone Text Amendment, which is actually an ordinance. And the ordinance is Zone Text Amendment fifteen dash two. And what's inserted in your ordinance is the actual table from the Residential Development Standards. And it specifically shows for RHD-20 column. If you look down and to the left, you will see that on the matrix, it will have the maximum height. And in parentheses, what's will be inserted is the word, the wording in, "Not to exceed two stories." Also, what's included is two def- two definition clarifications that were in part six of the zoning ordinance. Just, just provide clarification as to the story definition and also basement definition. So that concludes staff's, um, recommendation. What staff is asking is that the Planning Commission, pursuant to the direction of City Council, um, adopt the Zone Text Amendment resolution and which will refer this ordinance to City Council for first reading and second reading. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be more than happy to ask any questions.
Thank you. The, the only change to the table then is, is what is underlined in that, that column that you described.
Absolutely. What's underscored is what's being inserted into the table. So typically what happens is when you see an ordinance that comes before you, if there is existing provisions or text that's going to be deleted, then it will be a strike through and what's being added is underscored.
Any questions, of staff? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just wanted some clarification. Is the Gold Coast area in this zone that we're impacting by this?
No, ma'am. So the Gold Coast is low-density residential, nine dwellings, two acre.
Okay.
Same as like College Park East and West.
Okay. Cause I know there's always issues about that lower story they sometimes have that you can't see from the street.
Right, right.
But that would not be impacted by the change we're making today?
No, no.
Okay.
It's not, um, no, it's not.
Okay.
Any other questions? I had, I had just one comment. It's more, it's more of a nit, but, uh, you may want to consider this. We may want to consider this. Um... On the second page here, where it addresses the definition of story. Uh, we, we say, "An underground room or excavated usable space not qualifying as a basement shall be considered a story." And what we define as a basement is any excavated space having five feet or more of interior height. That's directly below a floor level that's not more than one foot above the top of the curb as measured from a public right-of-way. And I, I think, I think I understand what we're driving at there, but one could interpret that to mean that a four-foot-eleven excavated space under the floor, and it's no more than one foot above the curb, could be considered an extra floor. It's not a basement, but it could be considered an extra floor since, if I'm reading this correctly.
So, anything below five feet is not considered usable space pursuant to the building code?
Okay.
So we wouldn't allow it?
I see. So we, alright.
So you have to be able to stand up?
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, we don't need to explicitly call that out?
Yes, that's correct.
Alright.
So typically, the, the height for basement can be five feet to nine feet?
It's for munchkins.
Um, so, so essentially what this is saying, that a basement is not considered a story?
That's correct. So basically what this does is identifies whatever is below an existing sidewalk, if you will, below ground, if you create through excavation, is going to be identified as a basement. Anything above that curb constitutes a story, cause it's a surface above ground. Yes.
Makes sense. Um, should we consider adding explicitly the fact that a basement is not considered a story, or is that needed?
Uh, that's needed. Yes.
It is needed?
Yes, for, um, our definition and through the vetted process of the city attorney's office, yes, the clarification was necessary.
Does this thing says here, "Five feet or more of interior height"?
Right.
And if it's or more, now you're...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was looking at story. So go over your question again.
Well, we, we say here that a, we imply, we don't say it. We imply that a basement is not considered a story, but it doesn't say explicitly that a basement is not considered a story, a true basement as you define it.
That's where this is conflicting. It says if it's, uh...
So do you want us to add the wording, "Does not constitute a story" in basement?
Uh, if you think that that, uh, is appropriate.
It is kind of, it's confusing.
You think that would, uh...
We can do that. That's fine.
Alright.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the only point I, I had.
So after measured from the finish right-of-way, we'll add the text, "Does not include a story", or "Does not constitute a story"?
See, if it's not qualified as a basement, it's a story. And then a picture above it, you said, "Five feet or more of interior height." That's where we're kinda getting...
Is that, uh, Mr. Chairman, fine with you?
Uh, that's fine. Yes, fine. I'm happy with that one.
So shall it be?
So how does it read now, Mr. Director?
Uh, for basement?
Um, the amendment that you, or the change you just made, how would that read?
So let me read the definition of basement. "An underground room or excavated space having five feet or more of interior height, finished or unfinished, where the finished floor level directly above the space is not more than one foot above the top of curb as measured from the public right-of-way, does not constitute a story."
So you have a basement more than five feet and it's not a story? As long as it's not more than one foot above the curb?
Exactly.
Hmm?
Exactly.
Okay.
Alright, Mr. Chairman.
And that would, that would address, that would address some of the Gold Coast concerns you had too, right?
Well, actually, the Gold Coast, because they're on a hill, they're coming off the beach. They're on the downstairs, which is a story. And then, but, but from the street level, it's two stories. But from the downstairs, it's three.
That would be considered a basement then?
Ah.
Those are the lower floors.
Are you, are you referring to Gold Coast?
No, that's over. This is not, to pertain to Gold Coast.
Right, so this doesn't pertain to Gold Coast, but nonetheless, basement, as, as you indicated, yes, if it's below the finished grade like it is in Gold Coast, it classifies as a basement. Even though from the sand, the dry sand, it looks like these stories. Yes. But, um, Mr. Chairman, let me interject. The city attorney wants a clarification on the wording. I think she has a better way of saying it.
Am I on?
You are.
Okay. Um, just to clarify, um, in the definition of basement where it says "More than one foot above the curb as measured from the right-of-way period", and then you would add in, "A basement does not constitute a story."
And the key here is, is it cannot exceed one foot above the curb? That's the key?
Yeah.
Okay. So they could really go more than five or six feet. They could have a real football basement. But, uh... But it has to be, cannot, cannot go one foot above the curb?
Yes.
That's the whole clue. That's the key right there?
Yes.
Okay.
You can't excavate out two feet, build a room
No.
that, that extends eight feet tall, six feet above curb, the pocket of the curb level.
Top of it has, top of it...
Call it a basement.
Yeah, top of it can only exceed one foot above the curb.
Exactly.
So that's good. That's good. Cause you have tri-level, we have tri-level homes over where we are. And so that, that the middle level is, uh, probably only five feet above the grade.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who would like to address this issue?
Good evening, Commissioner's staff. Um, my name is Mike Bibby. I'm a resident of Old Town. Um, I was the chair of Seal Beach for Two Stories in 2008, in which the citywide vote came to limit, um, two-story construction in Old Town by seventy-three percent in a citywide vote. So, I'm supporting, uh, basically, the, the idea that, um, that we have a two-story height limit in Old Town. Um, um, I was unaware of the discussion of the basement until I came here. And I would ask you to reconsider this because one of the concerns that I have and residents of Old Town have is that if there's an increased population density, the parking becomes more difficult. And I can tell you as a resident of Old Town for forty-five years that parking, you know, is becoming increasingly impacted. And this has an effect on the residents and the visitors, and also ultimately the businesses too. So, um, I would conclude that by saying, I'd, I'd ask you to reconsider this idea of, of a basement because, uh, somebody could, could really go, you know, underground, who would go down to a third story, the way I'm understanding your, your, your thinking here. Um, and further, um, I believe a basement is something that, as, as Commissioner, uh, Mr. Basham says, is partly above man. A cellar is entirely below grade. I don't know if we've addressed the cellar, um, um, issue or possibly or not. But anyway, I would like to see, you know, the two-story above height, above grade level limit. And also I'd like to see, uh, habitable space of some sort, whether it's a basement or cellar, below grade level, uh, eliminated too.
You'd like to eliminate, we, we are not changing the policy here on building a basement. We're just defining what it is.
Does anybody have a basement in Old Town?
There are a few basements in Old Town that, that were legally permitted. I, well, I would call, I would, I am using the word basement loosely. They, I, I believe they're cellars though, were the ones that I've seen. Where they're, they're entirely below grade, uh, grade. I've seen them constructed.
Okay, so if somebody started, dug a hole five feet below grade and they put a room in there and they have seven-foot ceiling, they couldn't do that because they can only go one foot above the grade. But what if they went down and they created a big enough hole that they took it to one foot above grade and then they put two stories on top of that? Is that considered a three-story house?
No, it is not. Not by our definition. The refinement of definition of a basement does not constitute a story.
Okay.
Yes. And they just couldn't put habitable living environment below ground because it has no windows. It has no ventilation.
Okay.
And as to whether people can build, actually get a permit to build a basement is not a, not a subject of this tonight's discussion. We're just defining what a basement is.
Okay, I understand.
Is that, is that correct?
It's, it's already in the mini-code. All we did was just refine the definitions existing. Yes. We didn't, we didn't add basement. It's already in the mini-code.
You're, you're right.
Yes.
You're right. I understand.
We do, we do have one house on the hill that did a basement. I think it's the guy that owns McKenna's, the Volkswagen place. He, um, excavated between two houses and the residents on either side beside themselves because of the cracks they received to their residences. And even though it was shored up, still a lot of unscapable soil. He wanted to have an underground garage for his cars. And he built a big box. I, I understand why the residents were upset.
Did we address your concern adequately?
I, I, I think so. I think this, this basement cellar issue is something, uh, as you stated, is separate, maybe that can be or should be. I think it should be addressed at, at a future, um, planning commission meeting, city council meeting.
Mr. Director, you might take that under advisement, huh?
Yes, I'll take it under advisement. Thank you.
Okay. But is there anybody else who would like to, uh, address this issue? Saying none, we will close public testimony on this item. Does Commissioner have any, uh, comments?
I move to approve Zone Text Amendment fifteen dash two to the, to the City Council.
No, we haven't signed up.
And you want to do that as amended from the dais, to add the language to the basement?
Yes.
Okay, the only comment I would make is that we're gonna come back with this for College Park East West in the hill. That's on the agenda for a future meeting, correct? That will be agenda's.
Actually, that was under my, um, director's comment, but, um...
Okay.
Yes, that's true. A clean ordinance is coming next planning commission, June 15th.
Okay, great. I'll second.
Please vote. Figure out how to use this. The vote is four in favor, uh, none opposed, and no extensions. The motion carries and, uh, the text amendment is approved. Or actually, the resolution is approved, I should say. The text amendment will go to the council for approval.
For final, yeah.
Okay, that concludes the, uh, the items for tonight. Um, Mr. Director, do you have anything to report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I do want to introduce Amy Grayson, uh, to the Planning Commission. She will be serving as our Assistant City Attorney. Um, so we do welcome her aboard. We have a number of, um, exciting um, assignments that are coming your way. So we're glad to have Amy on board so that we can work with her and see if we can be part of the whole environment and the exciting pattern that we have coming for us.
We're more than happy, Amy. We're, uh, we need you desperately with this, this team here.
Welcome to Seal Beach.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Welcome aboard. Okay, do the commissioners have any comments to make tonight? Commissioner Campbell?
I'm confused about the one we took off, cause I went down to Surfside and they, they told me where to go based on the address I gave them. And it was this little red house right here that's in our picture. But I do see there is a conflict on the plan. It did give a different address, which I didn't notice until now. What's happening? Are they changing street names?
They're changing the addresses of each home. So, um, most of them probably already have been, uh, changed. So we need to include the proper address for noticing purposes. So that's why we need to continue to the first meeting in July.
Maybe when you do that, you could put the new address and say formerly known as twenty-two C Surfside Avenue because...
That's a very good idea.
Yeah.
Staff will do that.
That would clarify that because the guy at the gate, I mean, I told him I wanted Surfside Avenue. He sent me right to this.
Yeah, so he, he didn't even know either, I guess?
No.
Oh.
No, they sent me there too.
Wow.
And I drove right to it. It was easy to find.
Yeah.
Tiny little lot. And you could see that it was the same.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay.
But I like your idea. We'll put that formerly in front of the...
That'll clarify it for us. And we won't have to do it again.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it all?
The other thing I noticed was at the former Arco site, um, they're doing some beautification. Is that gonna be there permanently now? The little white fence and the plantings?
No, but it looks awesome, doesn't it?
It looks great.
You can thank the staff for that. It is a beautification project.
Mm-hmm.
You're absolutely correct. Um, we have noticed that the chain link fence and that green mesh has been there for a very long time. It's been graffiti, um, infested and, you know, to us, it looked like an eyesore. So we made contact with Arco, have, um, brought that to their attention, that this could be deemed as an, as an enforcement issue for us. Um, here's our suggestions for what you need to do. So after a little while of negotiation, um, we now have a enhanced aesthetically appealing site.
There seems to be some equipment on the site. Is that gonna be there quite a while?
Most likely so. It is their vapor extraction
Mm-hmm.
uh, machines and there's two of them on the site they will need to maintain. Is, so your question, is that going to be a permanently, um, installed fence with landscaping? It's up to Arco.
Okay.
Yeah. As to whether or not they wish to come forward at some point in time to do a development opportunity on the site. But it will stay enhanced aesthetically as you see until otherwise.
I have a friend who just had a house for sale a block and a half from there. It sold last weekend and that may be part of why.
I bet you some...
You know, cause it looks so much nicer now, so. That's great.
Yeah, I second that. Commend the staff on that, motivating Arco to step up.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Good job. Question or motion?
I, I have just one thing that I'd like to share. Uh, many of you may know that Celine Kyle passed away this Friday, May twenty-ninth, and, uh, if I may, I'd like to share just a few things about her.
Please.
Uh, she was born on September nineteenth, nineteen twenty-seven, in Ireland, and she shared not only her birth date, but a wedding date, an anniversary date, uh, with her late husband Jerry Kyle, and he was known by a lot of us as the man who collected clothes, food, and toys, and then took them, uh, to the poor in Mexico at Christmas time each year. Celine came to America, landing in New York in nineteen forty-two, and moved to California in nineteen fifty-two. She loved Main Street, Seal Beach, since she arrived here in nineteen fifty-five, and you could find her most mornings at, uh, O'Malley's in her booth, uh, enjoying her breakfast and the company of friends and patrons as they came through. So, um, she was, she's survived by four children, Terrence Kyle and Geraldine Kyle McLeaney, both born in Ireland, and Brian Kyle and Kathleen Kyle Keane, both born here in the United States. She has eight grandchildren spanning ten grades, and her memorial will be held at Saint Anne's Church tomorrow in Seal Beach, uh, June second at eleven a.m. Celine will be missed.
With that, we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of, uh, Ms. Celine Kyle.
We're done? We're done?